First of all, I want to say thank you very much for your patience and thank you to the presenters. I know so the presentations were a little long, but I think it was important that they had an opportunity to have their full, a lot of time and if needed to add some more information, I think it's important because more information is better. We're going to change the format a little bit and I've talked to my colleagues and I've just made a recommendation that instead of us asking all the questions off the bat, what we're going to do is going to ask one question from a member of council and then we're going to go from a question from the audience, from the mics. After that, I'm going to go from one of the questions that were submitted in writing or via email. And I just thought that would keep everyone kind of more involved versus us monopolizing the whole meeting here. I just asked one request to you when you do ask a question is first of all, let's try not to make it so political where we're attacking political parties or attacking individuals. And when I use the word attack, I shouldn't say we're just, we don't want to be putting people down, but I think it's important that you ask your question and be concise and not too much of a preamble. I've been to election forums where some questions can be, have a 10-minute preamble where I actually forgot the question. So I just ask that you kind of keep to the point, but of course, I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity. And at the end, if we keep on having questions, I'll slowly eliminate questions that have been asked by the audience or if they are in writing as well. So we have well over close to 100 questions here in writing, I do believe, but most likely there are a lot of these are redundant. So hopefully, we can get through this in a kind of an orderly manner, but I want to make sure that everyone gets involved here at this time. So I hope everyone's okay with that and I hope that my colleagues are fine with that. And I appreciate the panelists taking the opportunity to answer the questions as well. And if you feel that you're more qualified or if you'd like to add to the answer, please just let me know and I'll for sure recognize you, okay? Does that sound good? Perfect. So members, and so both mics, I guess Ken's going to take the mics now and there's going to be a mic one and we'll see a mic two. So, mic one, mic two. There we go. So is Ken, can everyone hear me still okay? Okay. He'll probably adjust the mic as he gets up there. Appreciate all your help, Ken. Thank you very much. So first, why don't we start with a question from members of city council. Does members of city council have a question right now? I see one down at the end from Mayor Spearman.
I have a question for Brenda Pond, Alberta Energy. It's a question that was submitted also by, in the pre-questions that were submitted to city council. Cities in Alberta are growing. This is the third time that we know of where there's been an issue. Once in Country Hills in Calgary, once in southeast Calgary, and now here in Lethbridge, where residents are concerned about the proximity of drilling to their homes, the residences, and the city's concerned about the impact on our growth plans, as has been illustrated by Mr. Green. Why doesn't Alberta Energy remove urban drilling rights from their available drilling options for energy companies?
I, once again, I guess obviously that was a good question from the mayor, but I just want to make sure we treat this kind of like a council chambers. And I understand there's going to be some, a bit of passion in the room regarding the question, so if we can just kind of hold off the applause, because if we do that, first of all, more questions could be asked, because every time people applaud, it's about 10, 15 seconds added to the whole process. So if we can just hold off the applause, I understand, I appreciate your passion about it, but just, I just want to keep some decorum here if possible. So the question's been asked.
Thank you. What I can say about that is I think that it's made quite public that Minister McQueen and her department are currently reviewing that policy, whether development in urban areas, whether there should be a change in policy for that, and that we've been notified that they would have some answers pretty soon. So further questions on that, I recommend that you put right to the minister's office as they're the ones conducting the review and she would have more for you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. I'd like to recognize microphone number one and please state your name.
I'm Trevor Page and my question is for Dr. Friesen. Dr. Friesen, at what point can the medical officer for health get involved in possible health risks to oil and drilling? A lot of people are talking about the health risks with the situation that we have in Lethbridge, on the blood reserve which is adjacent to Lethbridge. We have had H2S emissions, all the kids in the Kinnai High School throwing up with blinding headaches. So we know there's a risk. So what triggers the medical officer of health looking into the health situation? There are many environmental agencies, city council, politicians, all talking about health risks. When is it looked at by a medical professional, bearing in mind that prevention is better than cure? Thank you.
So the factors that potentially would trigger involvement of the medical officer of health and environmental public health would be, one, if a local physician caring for a patient and that feels that their patient's conditions may be related to oil and gas exposure that falls within the potential scope of public health. If it's occupational exposure for that individual, that would be covered under workplace health and safety, but if that was an exposure as a result of being in the general population, then that would be one situation. The second situation, probably the most common one that I'm familiar with, is through the process of review of the emergency response plan. And so as environmental public health is reviewing the emergency response plan from the oil and gas company, they've identify, they identify particular concerns or issues with the deficiencies in the emergency response plan from a health perspective. And that would lead to follow-up discussions with the company to have those concerns addressed and feeling that, to express those concerns to the Alberta Energy Regulator. Usually in those situations, if the concerns relate to the emergency response plan, we'd also be involved with the fire service or chief of the, fire chief, because of their key role that they play in the emergency response plan to see if our concerns are shared with them. The, I guess the third situation is where there is residents that are experiencing health concerns. So you gave the analogy of the school and that if that type, you know, with that event occurred and that, then hopefully, there'd be a follow-up assessment as to why that incident occurred at the school and what were the potential routes of exposure taking place and then again, that leading to a potential corrective action.
Thank you. I have a written question here from John Loggie. How can hydraulic fracking be guaranteed to be safe when casings are known to fail and the process itself is virtually unable to be controlled and after confined to target areas? Maybe I'll send that question to Dr. Schmidt.
That's not an easy one, right? It's a, it's a pretty broad question. I think what you have to do is you have to look at the individual situation, you have to look at how large a fracture you want to make, you have to look at the forces in the earth, you have to look at how much fluid you're putting in, and you should be designing your bore holes in accordance with that so that they can be safe. So you can't guarantee anything 100%. I think we all realize that in life, right? But you can minimize and mitigate the risks as much as possible based on the proper information. So I think, yeah, that's, it's going to take proper design and proper monitoring to make sure things don't go awry.
Thanks, Dr. Schmidt. Members of city council, I'd like to recognize councillor Iwasku.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have a question that's also for Dr. Schmidt. If you went to university here, you're aware that we sit on a lot of, a whole network of old coal mines, and I'd like to know how those vacated coal mines will affect the process that you described earlier.
I wouldn't expect, okay, let's see, there'd be one in the drilling where they might intersect one, just at the very early, because these coal mines are quite shallow. And if they were drilling into it, that would be, you know, still well within that protected water zone and they'd know right away because basically, they'd lose all their fluids and they wouldn't be able to continue drilling at that point. Other than that, I, you know, aside from hitting the mine directly, I don't really see too many risks from that. I think a lot of those things, those mines have probably long, long collapsed. They were old technology, they were using wood. There's probably not a lot of open space left down there that could collapse and so I really don't see that in the current context as too much of a risk.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize microphone number two and please state your name.
Beth Mundell-Atherstone. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having this evening. Many of us have submitted legitimate questions for this evening's forum. Our group of grandmothers and many others, many other concerned citizens call ourselves the black spots because we believe that urban drilling is a black spot on our province. Slope stability, baseline measurements of water, sour gas leaks and major blowouts are some of the factors central to this issue. We have put some of these concerns to music, just to put a different spin on this issue. Come walking on the west side, on the west side, won't you come along? Come walking on the west side with me. Now, Tim Toad. What's that now that I'm feeling? Think I'm reeling? Oh, it cannot be some tremors in the open air by jeans. What's that that I'm smelling? Bladdling, bladdling in the air I breathe, it's flaring from the gas stacks I see. So welcome to my nightmare, to my nightmare, won't you come along and share this fracking nightmare with me?
So, so I'm going to try to phrase that in a form of a question. Mr. Willard, do you believe they were singing in tone? No, it was all seriousness, ladies and gentlemen. I, once again, we all appreciate that, but we really have to keep decorum here and I just ask, I understand that we can probably do that stuff outside and I know there's other venues for that, but I just recommend we not do that. Just, I don't like being in this position because I really like all you peoples, but I don't want to be mad either, but I have to follow process too. So I'm going to ask a question to Bob. Under what conditions would you buy back mineral or subsurface rights like what happened in Fort McMurray? Because I guess there's been a lot of discussion of what's happened in Fort McMurray. Can you probably elaborate on that? Or Brenda, I think, could probably answer that question. I apologize.
That's okay. I think Bob already gave me the eye over here. As a normal process, we would not, once we sell the mineral rights, we don't have somebody come back and say, "We don't want these anymore," so we won't take them back or buy them back. However, there are, and there have been odd cases, like with the land use framework or regional planning, where it's been felt that it was in the best interest to do so. And so that's the cases that you might have heard about, but they are not common and they've happened very infrequently in the past.
And that's, and you're saying that's what occurred in Fort McMurray?
That was part, I believe, of the land use framework. So that was a much higher regional planning and that was part of what came out of that plan.
Thank you. And that was a written question. Members of city council, I do believe, Mr. Kaufman, I'm going to recognize councillor Kaufman because he just, and I'm keeping tabs and each one of you guys have ample opportunities. So councillor Kaufman.
Excuse me, can I add one more thing?
Yes.
That happened to be for oil sands and for coal, but not for petroleum and natural gas.
The Fort McMurray.
That's correct.
Thank you for the clarification. Councillor Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Willard, part of this process has been confusing for members of council as well because the AER is a fairly new body. A lot of the questions we've been receiving obviously have to deal with the fact that AER is an unelected body, it is 100% funded by industry, but you are charged with a very large responsibility. Two questions that have really been asked over and over again. Number one, when the AER decides on drilling licenses, is there any guarantee that their decisions will not be contrary to the broader public interest? So keeping public interest in mind. And secondly, to whom is the AER accountable? How do you report to those who you're accountable and are these reports available to the public? So this is a question, this is a question about process and just a little bit about the nebulous nature at the moment or our awareness of the AER.
Well, I appreciate.
If you could pull your microphone a little closer, thank you, sir.
The AER is a new entity. It combined, as I said, the ERCB, which has been around for 75 years. It also assumes the responsibilities of the environment and sustainable resource departments that have also been functioning in this province for a long time. I think the decision to merge similar or alike regulatory functions, I think, is twofold. One, I think this lifecycle opportunity here may bring a lot of dividends to Albertans because I think it allows us to maybe look at being more effective in, when one group has got that entire responsibility as opposed to having it piecemealed through a government. A second function will be probably efficiency gains, which I think is important to the government of Alberta, to Albertans, but also to industry. The funding question is sort of an interesting one. I've been with the regulator for basically my entire career in various different functions and departments. I can certainly without hesitation say that the staff of the regulator is very committed to the long-term, big-picture solution, if you will, for Albertans, as well as dealing with local proximity, individual farm, families, et cetera. I do not see the funding model as having any direct or indirect relationship to how well we do our job. In fact, over my.
Once again.
I need to complete it because over my career, I've seen other funding formulas. So I've been around in which government paid part of it and industry paid part of it. And I can assure you that the public voice was also loud. How does industry get away with only paying part of this cost of being regulated? Should not the prelude or pay philosophy? So I've been around long enough in which the public was very adamant that government should pay less and industry should pay more. So I've seen it going around in a number of cycles. So I appreciate the thoughts that the audience has and other Albertans have, but the day-to-day functions of the organization carries on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. I'm not going to allow that. Please.
My stakeholder is the Albertans first, the government of Alberta second, industry third.
Thank you for the answer, sir. I appreciate that. I will now recognize mic number one and if you could please state your name. Thank you. And please, if we can hold off on the applause or the booing and the cheering, I would greatly appreciate on behalf of all members of council and of course, the panelists. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Jordan. I'm going to try to lump two questions in here and make a statement at the same time. I hope you'll tolerate, tolerate me for just a minute here. Given that Golden Key has not started their drilling, I have to wonder why at this point in time, when the housing and the schools are on their doorstep, do they wait until now to come to us and say, "Hey, we want to drill a hole in there and maybe pollute whatever's around here?" That's, that's a statement, Mr. Chairman. I'm really worried that Golden Key has done this. But the, the other part of this, and I think, Mr. Willard, this comes to you. You talk about the emergency preparedness. Has there been a plan yet submitted by anyone, and I presume Golden Key, for emergency evacuation, should it be necessary?
As was indicated by your fire chief, emergency response planning in this province has been very, shown to be very effective. A lot of resources go into it. It's a very cohesive and collaborative approach by the various emergency groups in this province. It has heavily weighted on H2S. So as he indicated, there's quite a range in H2S content in wells. It ranges from possibly having a worker's safety issue and having the impacts not be basically constrained to the well site itself. In other parts of this province, and it's certainly not here, large sour wells do exist and the emergency response plan has to be robust enough to deal with very large areas of land and perhaps large populations. In addition to a site-specific ERP, we require a corporate emergency response plan. The types of wells being drilled and proposed to be drilled, and I emphasize we do not have an application at this time, would basically present a relatively low risk to safety from the H2S perspective. As such, the, the corporate response plan would be judged as to the appropriate focus. The corporate plan would have to be robust enough to deal with things like a fire in a windy condition. The corporate plan would probably be sufficient relative to the very low anticipated H2S content of wells in this immediate area.
Thank you very much. I have a written question here. Following up on emergency services, I'll direct this question to our chief. This is from Melissa Pop. Many people these days do not have landlines. Do emergency evacuation plans include using GPS technology to contact cell phones in the affected area?
Specifically to that question, so notification within that well site, emergency response planning zone is a requirement of the drilling company. Based on what Bob is mentioning in regards to the release rate on this well, the actual number of people within that zone would be very much limited to the workers actually on that site. So that wouldn't be required likely in the event of drilling on, in the area that people are concerned about. There are abilities for the province to access reverse E911 as well as the opportunity for texting is out there, but it's not here today in Lethbridge. So in the event of not having a landline and it's evening or after someone's gone to bed, we would not have a way to notify you other than through the emergency public warning system. So notification, when you are not available via landline, it becomes extremely difficult. And that's throughout the entire province of Alberta, which the province Emergency Management Alberta is looking at that today of how to do that, because that's becoming the standard versus the old landline technologies.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to recognize councillor Maya Shiro.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This question's for Mr. Willard. I'm just, I've read your website and looked at the governance model for the Alberta Energy Regulator. Help me to understand if you, you have quasi-judicial powers in that any decision you make can only be overturned by the Court of Appeal, first of all. Secondly, is there any point in this process that the government can influence any decisions made?
Okay, the governance model is, is part of the makeup of the regulator. It is certainly set out and statute accordingly. So it's not something we make up, it's something that the responsibilities and authorities are given to us by the province. When we make a decision, as I indicated earlier, we certainly are promoting local groups making local decisions, especially through ADR, et cetera, synergy groups, et cetera. Should it come to the regulator to make the final decision, is that we do fall back as with a last resort, if you will. So if the local groups can't make the decision, we are charged to doing so. In making that decision, we are required to follow the rules of natural justice and procedure fairness. If we do not, it would be grounds for basically a legal appeal. Our decisions also have regard for the overarching government policy, so we're not making decisions in isolation of that. So assuming that all three things are done, you're correct, the decision of the regulator is final, it is appealable only to court.
Thank you very much for your question and thank you for the answer. I'd like to recognize microphone number two and if you could please state your name. Thank you.
Carrie Stevenson. My question again, I believe, would be for Mr. Willard. You mentioned routine and non-routine applications and as I'm sure you can tell, applications by Golden Key would be non-routine for this area.
I agree.
What, to what extent do you do the negotiations with them to resolve our issues? How long will that go on? How long do we have to fight these people?
I guess I don't have a simple answer to you is, we have the regulatory model and procedures and practices. They're in place for both parties, both the landowners, the residents, as well as the company. As indicated by the Department of Energy, there are basically surface rights and subsurface rights. So I would not want to prejudge and go for accordingly. On a time scale, it could be a few weeks, it could be a few months. I've seen parties engage and then basically take a month or two off because they basically exhausted themselves. If the company wants to continue to pursue an application, then I've also seen parties reengage and perhaps a cooling off period was effective because I've seen many, many cases in which there's some form of resolution. I appreciate it cannot go on forever, but I don't have a timetable or deadline that I can give you.
I have a question for you, sir, personally on behalf of myself. You know, in our local newspaper, we have petitions being advertised at 10,000 signatures. You're seeing protests throughout communities. You're hearing it on the radio, you're hearing it on TV. This is a hot issue in our community. And as a regulator, do you look at that and go, "Man, it looks like this is a really important issue to the citizens of Lethbridge." And do you put a lot of weight into what's happening or do you just base it on what you hear at the hearing?
Whenever we see a community becoming concerned, emotions are running high, we have communication and engagement staff in the various area offices. So the first thing we would do well, well before a hearing, is try your best to get the parties engaged, to get information flowing both from the regulator to the community, among the community and between the community and the company. That, I think, is, would be our first step and a very early step if we see that emerging. The hearing itself, the venue, the scale and scope of that hearing would all be reflective of the type of concerns being raised. And if there's 1,000 people saying the same thing, it makes it very clear to us as to what are the issues. The hearing itself, being the quasi-judicial, that is the focus of the decision-making. The evidence that is brought to the hearing in a fair judicial way, the technical evidence before the decision-makers. So we do have hearing commissioners now formed under this Rita and the new regulator. It is their job to listen, to judge and weigh the evidence before them in the hearing. So the hearing eventually. So the hearing eventually will be the decision-making, and that's the evidence within it. There's a lot of things that can be done outside of a hearing.
Thank you. I have a written question here. What measures are planned in the event that the unprotected rock layer becomes fractured? Is there monitoring to ensure that the rock layer has not been fractured? And how often does this occur? And it's Rory Schaumberg that's asked the question. So I don't know, Dr. Schmidt, can you answer that question?
Yeah, can you just repeat the first one again, so I can understand?
What measures are planned in the event that the protected rock layer becomes fractured? Is there monitoring to ensure that the rock layer has not been fractured? And how often does this occur? In industry practice, at least.
By, I'm not sure what he means by protected. I wonder if he means protected water layer. So quite a bit of this is going much, much deeper than that wa, I'll try and answer it two ways, right, maybe? There's the protected groundwater, and the, the odds of a fracture growing up into that are, are quite small. So, you know, what is normally done in cases is you're, you're monitoring with seismometers. They might be in boreholes, they might be on the surface, and you're bringing in that information as it's coming, and you can actually start to plot out where the fracture and the zone of damage is actually growing. You can actually use that in some cases to look at what happens to the boreholes, because if the ground shifts up higher, and not necessarily in cases like here, but in, in some of the oil sands where you've had shifts in, in the ground layers, right, you can actually see the cement and, and the steel starting to, to crackle, right? So that's using seismic technologies to monitor that in real time. And I think some companies are even under requirements now to do that, say, in an oil sands environment, that they're monitoring full-time. Other than that, right, you're down quite deep and you'd put these, you know, chart out where your little events are going and then map them up later and find out what the zone of deformation was. So, and so you want to avoid the fracture growing up or growing down, because that can be bad for your production, and it's a waste of money, et cetera, right? So you try and keep it within that zone. And, yeah, I hope I've answered it, but that's about.
I appreciate that. And I also-
Just a follow-up here. The, the fracture propagation testing that Dr. Schmidt has indicated, often when there's a large multi-well play, companies do those kind of testing so that they can understand what's unique about that area, so that they can plan subsequent wells. The reason I just wanted to add a couple of comments is that these fracture propagation testing are required to be submitted to the regulator and to be part of the public record. So the kinds of information will be there for whether it's the academic studies, whether it's to support a community understanding. So the database is responding to the kinds of questions you're raising, making sure we have the information in the public record.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize microphone number one. And please state your name.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Visser. So it's obvious that you guys are not all politicians. But since urban drilling has become such a contentious issue within our province as of late, why doesn't the government let us have a referendum on the topic for the people to decide and thus resolving the issue? But since that's not going to happen, with all this public outcry and consultation, will AER open public debate about public drilling, our urban drilling, and let the matter be resolved and there be more public input, instead of the government already making its decision and pretending for us to have our input?
So, Mr., would you like to answer it, sir?
With all due respect, the, the question is, is, I guess, in several parts. You properly indicated the government of Alberta is looking into this topic, and Brenda confirmed that. So in that regard, that is the kind of public, the government policy that the regulator would benefit from, and as well as the public in this audience. The clarity would certainly make us, our job easier to do. So that's where we're coming from, is if there's clarity in, in policy, then that's fine. If there's not clarity in policy, we will look at each case at his own merit, we're, do our job to the best that we can.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'd like to recognize Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll speak quietly.
Are we still getting feedback? Is it better now? Okay, sorry.
I think I'll direct this probably to Mr. Green or Chief Cornforth, city staff, but if any of the other panelists want to jump in. I know there's been lots of discussion in the community about what council can and cannot do, and what tools that we actually have at our disposal to either stop or impede or control drilling within our boundaries. I think as Mr. Willard mentioned, increasing your setbacks. Mr. Green, you spoke about that briefly. It made sense to me that that just sterilizes more and more of our developable land, which is one of the things we're worried about. Folks in the community have been, some of the questions sent in, they've talked about, you know, closing off the dangerous good routes, or refusing to sell the companies the water they need for the fracturing, hydraulic fracturing to take care, place, or putting large exorbitant fees, development permit fees in place. I know the actions this council and previous councils taken, so far I know that if and when application is made, we will continue to represent our residents and, and, and fight. But I'm just wondering, are there any other avenues, any other tools that we have at our disposal to move this forward? Or have we sort of exhausted everything and now we're hoping to marshal the troops, so to speak?
Counselor Carlson, I think there's two parts to that question. Certainly some of the feedback and comments that we've heard at administrative level and council has been, well, maybe you could rezone this area, or maybe you could change the subdivision process and attach some rules or add some conditions to a development permit. And I think it's important to know that the city's current municipal development plan contemplates this, this entire area for residential development. So that in itself is its highest order plan. Subsequent to that, there are community plans, which I showed on the slide earlier, that are being developed, which also contemplate largely residential and related uses. The, the challenge of, of contemplating, say, changing the zoning or adding conditions to the subdivision is that the Municipal Government Act is very clear in its articulation of the rules of engagement and where municipal authority starts and ends with respect to provincial interest. Section 619 of the act very specifically states that wherein a municipality has a statutory plan that is different than that of an approval by the ERCB, AER, the AUC, or any other provincial agency, and where they conflict, the provincial agency is the higher order in terms of priority. So our plans have to comply with what is being approved by, in this case, the AER. It also goes on to say that development permits, land use bylaws, and those types of matters don't have any merit or any consideration with respect to the application. So essentially, we're not able to issue a development permit or a subdivision application because the, the provincial requirements trump those. The second part of the question was what rule, what other tools do we have at our disposal? Certainly one of the comments that's come up in the community is what about water? What about electricity? Those are, those two matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Lethbridge within council's control. The electricity that may be required to these wells, or the water, which is licensed, which the city of Lethbridge has license to take water from the Old Man River and process, those are entirely within the city of Lethbridge's control. So I think in terms of some tools, those are the tools that are available. As far as roads are concerned, I think Chief Cornforth explained quite clearly with respect to weights and measures and requirements around dangerous goods and, and routes that are taken. Those apply pretty much, I think, to any, any type, type of equipment that you're talking about, as opposed to whether or not it's oil or gas, or, you know, whether it serves a gas station, or whether it's servicing a well site, the, the rules that apply on roads are the same. So I don't think there's much opportunity with respect to that unless you have a different opinion.
Thanks, Jeff, and to Counselor Kaufman. Sir Carlson, sorry.
That's twice in one day.
I'm sorry. We certainly don't want to add another risk to the community that doesn't need to be there, and transportation of dangerous goods does, in heighten that risk. Obviously, we have to accept certain risks within the community to do our daily business. But when it comes to transportation of dangerous goods, it would be difficult to, to close off that to, to one particular service or, or one particular, particular agency without being challenged likely in, in, in the process within the courts, and that would be, our solicitor would probably be better to answer that when we started granting permits to one or another company excluding another. But again, it would be, we'd prefer not to introduce that risk, so alternative means if there were pipelines available to be shared pipelines. We hope the Regulatory Board would consider that as part of a minimization if we were forced to accept it as a risk.
I'm going to make one change here. We have lots and lots of questions in writing, and I'm going to make sure that all the people from the panel, the people down there that are helping answer these questions, you, each one of you guys will be given all the questions, and that whatever is probably a question you could answer, you could answer it, not tonight, but you could answer it in writing, because it is all typed out. And then we will post your answers onto our website, because there's no way that we can answer a hundred and ten, as the questions, because we can't answer every question. But we will make sure that any questions that are sent tonight will come with a response, and they will be posted on our website from the proper people who can answer those questions, just so you know, so people understand. Because I want people in the audience to have a little more opportunity, as well as members of council, to ask questions. I'd like to recognize mic number two, please.
My name is Courtney Lamb, and I have a question for Mr. Willard. I'd like to know who your agency is actually accountable to and how that accountability is administered, and whether or not any reports or anything like that that is, goes between you and whoever you're accountable to is made public.
All the reports we make, you will find on our website. So if we have a report on the performance of, say, flare, venting, incineration, gas conservation, as a very important topic in this province, our joint performance, and I say joint, how is industry performing and how is the regulator performing would be in an annual report that's on our website. So by topic, by topic, there is certainly reporting in that regard. Who are we accountable for? As I said before, I personally, as staff member, hold myself accountable to Albertans first, government of Alberta second, although it would be amiss to say that, yes, the, the chairman of, of my organization is appointed by government Alberta. So if he's not doing a good job, or she's not doing a good job previously, I guess change will happen at the top through government changes. So.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Higgins.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Regarding, question is for Dr. Schmidt. Regarding boreholes, if cement or casings leak, you talked about the potential risks to groundwater. This obviously concerns me, and all there's a monitoring place, we talked a little bit about monitoring for this. By the time the monitoring equipment finds a leak or crack, is this not too late? And is not the quality of water already compromised?
That's a tough, I think, again, that would be almost a case-by-case basis, right? And I think you want to try and get to that problem before it begins. And so, you know, doing continued monitoring of the wells to try and ensure that they're not leaking is probably the best approach. That said, there's, there's many potential places where fluids could be coming from. It's not just hydrocarbons. It could be salty water coming up, going into groundwaters. It could even be deeper groundwaters that maybe aren't as high quality, right? But, you know, that's, that's a very difficult to, once you've breached it, it, and if there was enough pressure, you could have problems, you know, with pollution. So again, there's no, you know, way you could say that there can't be a problem. I think you really have to make sure you've done things right from the get-go, you know, A1 class, and making sure you're doing a good job right from the beginning is probably the best insurance.
Maybe just to expand that, the standards for drilling completion of wells have changed over time. So I would have a lot of confidence in the wells drilled in the last 10 years. I would have maybe less confidence as it went back in time. We do have older wells that have shown the tendency to leak. Should those leaks be found, and maybe I should back up. We want to be both reactive, so that if there's a complaint of observation, we go and investigate. We also want to have a proactive plan on testing older wells or even abandoned wells to see if there is a problem of leakage. To date, most of the leakages we would classify as, as very small. Anything that's large, of course, is immediate action. Wells that have to be re-entered, abandoned to the standards of the day. We basically want to preclude leaks, but we do have to, to respond to perhaps the legacy of older wells, some of which may have small leaks. We have to be positive and reactive, but, you know, hopefully in a proactive way.
I'd like to recognize microphone number one.
Hello, my name is Patrick Berthlot. I'm a resident of the West Side. I have a house over there. My family have four houses. I'm against drilling, and I support no drill, and I support the black spots. But I have an interesting question for Mr. Willard here, because I learned something here tonight. I thought this was going to be about three wells about to be drilled on the West Side. Myself and a few people I'm sitting with found out tonight that there are in fact 20 wells over there producing and/or shut down. So what I'm looking at here, Mr. Willard, and I'm wondering if you could touch base, because I think we have the same problem that happened in Calgary and Fort McLeod and everything. We have a unique problem here in Lethbridge with urban sprawl, massive urban sprawl. And it's looking now like what we've done here, our forefathers, I won't blame any of this council, because none of them, I believe, were around. But would you blame this on poor planning, on our, on our planning and development departments, that we moved our city to the West Side where there are 20 active wells? Some of them, as you said earlier, before rules were put in place, some of these wells are closer to houses than they're, they're allowed to today. So would, would that be fair to, to say that the problems coming now with urban drilling is the fact that the cities are moving into the oil patch? I mean, that's what it looks like, right?
Thank you for that question, and I'll wait for an answer. Thank you.
Okay. It's a loaded question, and I do have to acknowledge that maybe both sides in the planning world can do a better job. We should not be planning in isolation. We should be planning in more integrated fashions. So the, the, the urban development, as well as the oil and gas development planning processes, maybe can and should in the future do a better job.
I'd like to recognize microphone number two, please.
Hello, my name is Jamie Warren, and I'm here on behalf of my daughter today, who's seven years old. She lives on the West Side, and she's asthmatic. And so I would like to thank Mr. Willard and Mr. Schmidt for mentioning being proactive. I know, Dr. Friesen, in the beginning, someone asked you at the beginning, what was your plan for being proactive? And I know that you talked about your response, but I wasn't clear on what you were talking about when you, I don't know if I didn't mishear you or what, but I didn't, could you re-clarify being proactive to these, to this fracking?
So I, I guess, I think underlying your question is, is, is the fact that your daughter has asthma and you live in the area, is that sufficient?
That's sufficient. I would like to know your plan. You're here to represent me, and I want to know what that is.
First of all, can you just pull your microphone just a little closer, so we can hear you a little better? Thank you.
So the, the short answer would be no, that would not be sufficient, because what we need to see in, from the proposed well and the way that it was planned to be drilled and operate, that there would be emissions coming from that well that would have a negative impact on your, your daughter. And so the preliminary information that I've seen from the, from the company- impact on your daughter. And so the preliminary information that I've seen from the company is that I'm not seeing significant issues arising from that well that would create problems. With a couple of qualifiers, in terms of, there's not the details about what's going to happen during the actual drilling, in terms of the amount of drilling equipment that will be on-site, and that, and whether they would be producing emissions that may be of concern. Like if your, if your house was located immediately adjacent to where that well drilling was occurring.
Mine is, but other people's are.
And that, then, there's concern about diesel particulates and that, that are coming off the equipment, and that. And so rather or not, they'd be at a level that would be of concern to somebody with asthma in close proximity. That might be one issue to explore further. The other is, is there going to be a flare on there, or an incinerator? And what sort of combustion products will be produced? How long will they operate for? That again would be an issue, that again needs to be looked at as part of the more detailed application, so we could be assured that there is not emissions coming from the well drilling that would be at a level to trigger health concerns for your daughter or somebody else with asthma.
So I can tell my daughter Lily, and she's safe. She's good.
Well, what will be, what Alberta Health Services would be looking at in terms of, from a health perspective, is there any indication that there's going to be emissions from this well while it's being drilled or operated, that would have a negative impact on the people living nearby? And so if our assessment was to find that, then what we would be doing is communicating to the company that this is our concern. How are you going to, what changes are you going to put in place with the operation of the well, either during the drilling or operation, to address these concerns, so there's not health risk created for your daughter? And if we're not satisfied with that response, we'd be communicating to Alberta Energy Regulator, this is an outstanding concern that we have, hasn't been resolved in discussion with the applicant. Please consider this in your approval process.
Please consider it. So Mr. Willard, maybe you should be answering the question. So what do you do when that happens?
We will be considering any outstanding concern.
And they can attach a condition to the application for the company, requiring them to address it, if they feel that our concerns and the basis for them are legitimate.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer. I'd like to recognize Counselor Kaufman, please. Followed by mic number one after that.
I'm going to ask a joint question here, because it does cover a couple of areas, and it's actually to Dr. Friesen and to Chief Cornforth, and it deals, again, on the issue of H2S. In terms of peer-reviewed literature, Dr. Friesen, is there a depth of research emerging on the effects of flaring or H2S leakage proximate to large urban centers? I know that there's drilling in an awful lot of large centers in the United States. Again, context of this meeting is concerned for the urban center of Lethbridge. And if Chief Cornforth could then answer about clarifying about the release rate of H2S in the community, that would be appreciated.
Well, my comment would be, the information that I've seen with the H2S levels from this, related to this proposed well, is as Mr. Willard has indicated, they would be of concern or issue on the lease site itself. So these are quite a bit different type of wells than the ones that would be seen around the periphery of Calgary, where there's much higher concentrations of H2S, and a much higher potential release of H2S. So, for example, in those wells around Calgary, if there was an uncontrolled release, we were talking about air levels of H2S of concern, extending, depending on the modeling, four kilometers or more from the well. In the case of this particular well, we're talking about extending 10 meters. So totally different situation. So I, I think H2S from these wells is really only of concern to, as the chief has indicated, to the workers on the site. Now, I would defer in terms of, to Mr. Willard, rather, there might be some issues related to H2S in the oil being produced, that might give rise to vapor releases that would be odor issues at the time. And again, that would be type of information that the applicant should be providing. With regards to the flaring, again, it depends what is being burned, and the composition of that. So that again is something that the applicant should be providing to us, so that we could understand, are there any risks related to the flaring? I guess my own assessment would be with the proximity of these wells, you know, I'd be very reluctant to see any long-term flare. And by long-term, I mean more than a few weeks being in existence. These should be connected into a distribution system, and they should not be flared in terms of given their proximity, unless there's something that the AER says that there's such a substantial safety risk from not having a flare, that you need to have an emergency one. But I would, I think from the health perspective, we would have substantive concerns if there was a proposal that required an ongoing flare to be operating for these wells.
Chief, Chief Cornforth, do you would like to add to that?
I will add to that. And in regards to the corporate safety plan for what the well release rate is, it's a very generic plan, based on the well release rates estimated. So that estimate, or quantifying that, I think Dr. Schmidt can tell you, it's really based on what science they're using, on what they know is in the ground, and what the history of the wells around the area look like, what their seismology tells them. But it is merely an estimate. So we're going on that as, hopefully they're on target with their estimate, and it isn't off, and we don't hit a bubble, we don't hit something unusual. But really, the release rate on the proposed wells is low. It's a very low release rate. I think the rate we're seeing is .0013 cubic meters a second. So as said, it would only impact the people that are working on the well site, but it becomes an irritant for everyone else. So how you quantify that as a health risk, I think that is best served by Alberta Health Services comments. Again, flaring and things related to the release rate is only as good as the equipment that's on-site, and if it's functioning and working and operating well. So it's a low risk, but it is still a risk.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize microphone number one.
Thank you very much, Coordinator. My name's Al Barnhill. And I, I don't know where to start with my questions, but seriously, I think that allowing the corporation to have responsibility for this plan is seriously flawed. They can pull up their rigs and buzz off back to China in a short period of time. But that's not my main point. My main point is, and this goes to Mr. Willard, there have been, over 10,000 people have signed up petitions. And there's been a steady stream of concerned citizens writing articles to the newspaper. I don't know if you get a subscription to Lethbridge Herald, but I would suggest that maybe you do so. I'm not on their staff. And also to the ministry, and just read the sentiments that are expressed. Now, this is coming to my question. A lot of this has to do with the emotions of people. There's a lot of anger, there's a lot of frustration. Here, this lady being concerned about her daughter, I would be too. So you've got a whole area of mental health that is not being addressed here. And I would not expect most of you could. Now, my main question, my main point, has to do with the economics of the situation. And there's a connection between the emotional concerns that people have, and what happens to real estate prices. A study by the University of Alberta Resource Economist showed that there's between 4% and 16% property loss when wells are drilled in an area. Take the average of that, and it's 10%, conveniently. It's not my study. 10%, okay? It's been discovered through some pretty diligent work by citizens in this community, not by the city council, not by the city administration, not by AER, but by diligent citizens, who have found that there are 4,000 homes within this area that's designated for the drilling. 4,000, sir. Now, these are not mansions, like you might be...
Mr. Barnhill, just to your question.
Yeah, I'm kidding there. Living in Calgary. But these houses are estimated to be valued at $300,000, okay? So arithmetic works out to about $1.2 billion worth of personal assets, homes. Now, if 10% of that is lost, that property value is lost. That's $120 million, okay? Now, is this having any impact on AER, on the Government of Alberta, or on anybody?
Thank you for that question. I guess that question was addressed to Mr. Willard. So Mr. Willard, I just, maybe I can paraphrase the questions. Do you guys look at the direct possible impact of property values when making decisions?
Property values can and have been issues brought before the regulator in hearings. With respect to the U of A study reported, there's a large number of, well, there was a number of studies that have tried to address property values, and it's a very challenging task. But as I said before, it is, and has been, a factor for the regulator to determine, or at least assess, its pros and cons, its weighting, if you will, of the various evidence before it. So it certainly would be part of that deliberation.
People applauded for you.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize microphone number two, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Brian O'Gurchnick. I've lived in the West Side for the last 20 years, and raised my family there, and I think it's an excellent place to live. My question is, why, you know, they always talk on advertise about Alberta has the Alberta advantage. The government advertises, you know, such a great place to live, come and do business with us here in Alberta. I personally don't think there's any advantage of living right next to a flare stack, or just downwind from a flare stack. I don't see the advantage. I don't see why the citizens of Lethbridge should take the risk, while the government and the companies are going to make the profits. I don't see the advantage there at all.
I'm not going to really take that as a question. I'm going to take that as just, do you agree with my, what I said?
And then here's a question for Dr. Schmidt. Do you personally think it's a good idea to drill in Lethbridge, in the city limits?
Thank you for the question.
Again, I'm gonna, I think you have to look at all of the risks. Actually, let me bring this out of left field. You know, in five years, we're going to be shipping all of our gas to Asia. So our natural gas price is going up. We could be looking at drilling in Lethbridge for geothermal purposes, right? Because we want to heat our new buildings. So I would hate to blanketly say, you know, let's not drill in an urban area, just because I think we're throwing some things out, right? So that's, sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please, please.
And I'm not saying, you know, no, it has to be, it's not really, I think it's almost a political question that comes down to here. I mean, we can look at the risks of this, and decide what they are. And it's not up to me, really, to decide on whether that...
Your opinion.
Well, yeah. I'm just a simple scientist, right? Yeah.
I think, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not going to allow that. And secondly, you've answered the question, Mr. Schmidt, and your answer was, I don't know exactly. But all I can say is, I appreciate that. And that's his answer, and so we have to take it for what it is, please, ladies and gentlemen. I have a question from Counselor Iwasku.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. As a follow-up to Counselor Carlson's question about what else can council do, when this goes to AER for approval, who has a seat at the table? Does the City of Lethbridge get a seat at the table? Mr. Willard?
The City of Lethbridge would be a participant, a stakeholder in that process. So it would have the opportunity to, say, participate in a hearing, to bring to the panel of hearing commissioners, your evidence, your points of view. You'd have the opportunity to cross-examine other parties, such as an applicant, in that regard. But the panel of three hearing commissioners would be making the decision.
And so just, this is a follow-up, it's not another question. But so who has a seat at the table? There's the applicant, obviously, and the City of Lethbridge can come. Can citizens come? Can citizen groups come? Who else has a seat at the table?
Well, once an application is received, and once it's gone through the regulatory processes, and a decision is made to go to a hearing, then the participation would be a reflection of the issues. So in a community like this, and let's say there was 300 people, and in addition to council, who wants to participate, we would be strongly encouraging, let's say, the 300 people to perhaps form one, or two, or perhaps three groups, so they can voice their points of view in a cohesive manner, basically for the effectiveness and efficiency of the process. We would not want necessarily have 300 standalone participation factors.
But anyone who wants a seat at the table can have one, basically.
Well, they have to be able to demonstrate that they may be directly affected, they have an interest in land. So if they live, for example, on the east side of the city, and wanted to voice their concerns, I think there may be some challenges as to how much time or weight we would have somebody living on the east side, not the west side.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Green, would you like to add to that, because I think you did want to say something?
I just wanted to do a follow-up. My understanding of Directive 56 of the AER is that the participant involvement program includes anyone that's affected or considers themselves to be affected. And the City of Lethbridge or local authorities are one of the directly affected participants that are asked to be involved. We have filed a statement of concern to the AER. We have attended most of the, most of the sessions that have been put on by the AER, or by the applicant. So my assumption, and I guess it's a clarification, my assumption is that we would be given standing at a hearing, should a hearing be held, but there's no guarantee that a hearing would be held. Is that a fair statement, Paul?
Okay, the regulator will reach a point in its application process, in which it would basically be looking at 300 statements of concern, including, I believe, four from the City of Lethbridge. It would look at the nature and type of those concerns, and I guess have to be able to make a determination that the concerns fall, say, within our jurisdiction, that the concerns are coming from groups or individuals that have a potential impact to be harmed, as well as, and/or an interest in land. So there is a determination point. It would be, I guess, unusual, but that's a separate decision. So I don't want to prejudge that. But I think it would be safe to say that the board would be faced in a difficult position not to come to some conclusion that people that may be affected, or have a position of land, do not exist within that package of 300 statements of concern. So I'm not going to be here tonight saying, we're guarantee you a hearing, but that would be a decision point of the day. Once that decision is made, then the hearing process kicks in.
Thank you. I really need folks, please be respectful. These people traveled down from long distance. They're guests of our community. You know, you may not agree with their answers, but I think we need to be respectful of the process here. And I would just ask that we, if we just, I understand there's passion, but... here, and I would just ask that we, if we just, I understand there's passion, but I've been somewhat lenient, but just no yelling or shouting or nothing like that, because I just, I think it's disrespectful, and I just ask that you don't do it, okay? So I'd like to recognize microphone number one. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria Fitzpatrick. I'm a citizen, and I'm a very concerned citizen. So as recently as January the 10th of this year, there was a leak in Coal Lake, and my understanding is that that well was, in fact, inspected very shortly before that leak occurred. So my question to you is, what are you going to do to protect us, every citizen of this community, against things like that? And I know that you've said, you know, there's regulations, and you have the stainless steel pipes, and you have the cement casing, but those failed, and it wasn't a few liters, it was over a million, and there was considerable ground contamination and water contamination because of it. So what are you going to do to protect us? And I'll direct the question to Mr. Willard.
Well, the Coal Lake example is certainly totally different technology, totally different geology, et cetera, so I can't have an apples-to-apples comparison. But I do take it from your question as to what are we doing to protect you, your family, and your community? The regulatory model includes a number of steps, as I said before, the best science, the best technical rules we've got, but I also paraphrased that in my presentation, is that they're only as good as the boots in the ground. And in that regard, we basically have the field staff expertise to do, often qualify it, risk-based, risk-ranked, periodic checks. So we can't be on your well site 24/7. We're spread out across this province. We've got the area offices, I believe we've got nine across the province, so they're doing those 12,000 or 13,000 inspections.
Thank you, and I will tell you, this community is engaged.
That is very evident, and I'll make sure I report that whole.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Mayor Spearman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Parker. What we're hearing tonight consistently, and I mean this very respectfully, people in the audience are being told when they contact Alberta Transport or they're contacting Alberta Energy, that the municipalities have more power than they think. We've heard also tonight that there's limitations on that power from Mr. Green. We see the, on the fact sheet for the Alberta Energy Regulator, they refer to the Athabasca Regional Plan. We've been looking at the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, the deadline for input is this coming Friday. We're trying to have the Municipal Government Act listed as one of the acts, so municipalities have rights, and we would like amendments to section 619, as Mr. Green has said. But we seem to be facing brick walls in terms of getting any rights as a municipality that we can actually use to enforce or have any say. I also heard, unless I misheard, the people from Alberta Health Services say if they have health issues, they bring it forward to the Alberta Energy Regulator, but in the end, it seems like the Alberta Energy Regulator trumps municipalities, and they trump Alberta Health Services. Is what I'm hearing correct?
And I will direct that question to Mr. Willard.
Please.
Maybe I'll start with the health component. Brent, on a well-by-well case, if he has concerns, certainly will bring it to our attention, and we respect him for that, because we also understand that the kind of work he does before he comes to that point. What also has to be acknowledged, too, is that there's a number of environmental standards, air-ambient standards, for example, that's set in this province by government with the input by health experts, et cetera. We, as a regulator, would monitor flaring, for example, to those standards, to make sure they never exceed it, and we make sure the design of the equipment is such that they will, quote, "never be exceeded." I'm not saying it would be absolute guarantee, but the best of our ability, it will basically be very unlikely to be exceeded. So a number of those health questions is not something the regulator is necessarily responsible for. We are responsible for making sure they do not exceed those limits. On the question of jurisdiction and authority, if you will, I guess I just defer back to Rita and the various acts and regulations we're responsible and accountable for, and yes, we do have a high degree of responsibility, and we take it very seriously.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize microphone number two.
I'd like to start by thanking all the panelists for being here tonight. It's been a long night. Mike? My name is Kevin Float, and I live on the west Lethbridge, and my comment comes from an experience I encountered at a rally in City Hall before Christmas, and there were about 300 people at this rally, which had speakers who were talking about health issues that they had experienced as ranchers south of Calgary. The stories they told were truly horrific. It was unbelievable, and I can't accept that they're lying to hundreds of people in public, so I'm assuming there's some truth to that. But it gets to the question of, there's a few high-profile cases of health issues associated with the oil and gas industry, and the question came up to them, if there are so many cases, why don't we hear about it? And they were saying, it's because the affected landowners will sign confidentiality agreements with the oil companies in return for some monetary compensation. So are there cases where there are health issues that aren't being brought to the attention of the AER?
I'm not naive enough to think that we are notified of 100 percent. I would like to think that we are exposed to and involved in a large enough sample that the seriousness of a concern in a community is there. We do have a fairly robust incident investigation, and all those reports are in the public record accordingly. So whether or not there's examples somewhere in this province that somebody is, for whatever reason, not forthcoming in their concerns either to experts like Brent or myself as regulator, they may occur. I'm not going to say they don't occur.
So just a very quick follow-up. So if there is such a case with a confidentiality agreement, and the company has notified AER that they have violated a requirement, would that be in the public record?
If the company has come to us and voluntarily said that there was a problem, you bet you it's in the public record. Is that your question?
Well, it sounds odd, but the property owners, if they have signed a confidentiality agreement, they can't talk about it, but the company, it's up to them to come forward. Is that my understanding?
Well, we have a field staff going through the province, so we may find out independently of that. But the system works better if one or both of the company and the landowner would volunteer that information.
You know, before we move... Sorry, can I maybe add on to that? Please, sir.
I mentioned in terms of the protocols that we're working on updating with Alberta Energy Regulator, and one of the protocols in there deals with the situation if an individual is experiencing a health complaint. And so the protocol, as was developed with the, you know, former ERCB and also with the Producers Group in terms of industries, is the understanding if there is an individual that comes to the attention of the Alberta Energy Regulator investigator, that there's a health concern, that health is to be informed so that we can follow up on it from our perspective. Similarly, industry is also supposed to be obliged to notify both the AER and health of the event, and then, again, you know, it's open in terms of, for the individuals to contact us either directly or through their family physician with their health concerns. So hopefully, if there are significant health issues occurring, we are hearing about them, but if somebody chooses not to approach us, then we don't hear about it.
Thank you. Dr. Burn, could you do me a favor? Can you let that young fellow behind you, because I don't know how late he's going to be up tonight, and I know he has to go to school tomorrow, and he's been waiting in line? Do you mind if he asks this question first?
I just put the microphone at his level.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Burn, appreciate that. And thanks to you for participating. Nice and loud.
I have a question for Dr. Schmidt. Isn't it true that fracking produces wastewater?
What's the question again, if you can just repeat it?
The question was, isn't it true that fracking produces wastewater? And yeah, it does, right? So most of the water, depending on the case again, most of the water that goes in comes back out, and other times there can be, the fluids that are in the reservoirs would have water with them, too, right? And that would be produced with the oil. Depends on different cases, right? And so, yeah, that's absolutely true.
And what happens to this contaminated water?
It's supposed to be treated and put into deep disposal wells, usually. What happens in Alberta primarily, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Burn, you can follow up behind that as well. Thank you.
Just to follow up the young man's question, the backflow of water from fracturing, maybe small volume here in this local area, but it could be a much larger volume. Smaller, large, we would classify that as oilfield waste. Our rules would be found in directive 58, for those that want to search their website. So we have special requirements for the storage, transportation, and basically the long-term disposal in wells.
Dr. Burn, then we'll follow up with microphone number two. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My name's Jim Burn. I'm maybe just to, I'm a professor at the University of Lethbridge, and we may be, very well be colleagues in American Geophysical Union, and I, so I do a lot of work through AGU. A couple of, first, actually, I wish organizationally you would have had an environmental scientist on this panel as well, that would have helped, I think. Dr. Schmidt, possibly, Mr. Willard. This technology, I don't believe from fairly extensive literature reviews, is going to stand the test of time. It's not doing well, you know, the environmental reviews it's getting are quite negative. The yield reviews it's getting are quite negative. I'm wondering, you know, Alberta has a policy, and recognizing that's getting a little political, of not taking the foot off the gas, that's been the policy of this government for a long time. I'd like to see the science community saying, we can't slow down on this because, you know, it's not a well-proven technology. Not exhaustive literature reviews, but extensive literature reviews, not finding a lot of support environmentally for the fracking technology. If I may sneak in one other question, Dr. Friesen, this is a tricky one, and I admit it right up front. There are problems in Alberta with medical officers, medical doctors being intimidated, others suggesting they've been intimidated. How is Alberta Health, and maybe the political master's, going to deal with that to make sure, because you made reference earlier to the fact that, you know, will doctors report medical problems and Alberta Health act on it? I don't have a full confidence, knowing some of those doctors quite well, that feel they've been intimidated.
So first, there was two questions there, and we'll ask, Dr. Schmidt, I think the question was regarding the integrity of the process and the science behind it and the history.
Well, there's actually still a lot we don't know about the fracking. We don't even, you know, we're fracking, but we don't understand how the fluids are getting out of these rocks, for example, right? And so you're right, there's, we could be leaving, you know, a lot in the ground that we may not be able to get out in the future, right, because of the way we've done it. So there's issues like that. I can't comment so much on the environmental, I mean, I think, again, you just have to do these things to the A1 level as much as you can to ensure that fluids don't mix and that the waste fluids are properly disposed. I think that's where a lot of the environmental issues are coming from, for sure, yeah. But the science is still quite immature in this, right? We're trying to understand, how are those fractures growing underground, right? We can map kind of where they're going, but what are they really doing? And how is the fluids coming out of the rock, right? So there's a huge amount we don't know at this point in history.
But just a caution there is the hydraulic fracturing technology has been around for a long time. So a lot of the media coverage, et cetera, that you're hearing today is concerning the multi-stage fracturing in long horizontal wells. So 30, 40, 50 stages in a horizontal well. We've been doing one-stage fracturing since the 50s. We have about 180,000 wells in this province that have a single fracture in the bottom of that well. We have 8,000 horizontal wells with multi-stage fracturing. So I would comment that we know a fair bit about single fractures. We have more to learn from this multi-stage fracturing.
I think there was a question to Dr. Friesen as well, from Dr. Burn.
Yes, so the question was in terms of the, around physician intimidation. I guess what I can indicate from my, a couple of things is, one, there was a report that the Health Quality Council of Alberta issued on this, and that there was a strong statement from the Minister of Health that, and as well the senior leadership of Alberta Health Services, that recognized the importance of physician advocacy, the importance and legitimacy of physician advocacy on behalf of their patients. And for Dr. Sutorpin and myself, our patients are the populations that we serve. So there's an acknowledgement that that's an important role for us to carry out, and we should be carrying out that role as well. We have a strong support from Dr. Jim Talbot, the Chief Medical Officer of Health for the province with Alberta Health Services for carrying out our responsibilities, and also from Dr. Jerry Preddy, who's the Senior Medical Officer of Health within Alberta Health Services. So I feel quite comfortable in terms of being able to speak out on issues impacting on health, if the circumstances support that there's a substantive health concern that needs to be addressed.
Just for time guidelines, I appreciate that. I'm going to try to wind this up no later than about 11:20, 11:30 at the latest, just so people know, but I'm going to make sure that everyone who's at the mics gets recognized. But I also want to be respectful to our panelists, because I know, I want to make sure you're okay timewise. Are the panelists okay? Are we shooting around that time? So, and once again, and anyone who has questions in writing, they will have answers to those questions, and they will be on the City of Lethbridge website, just so people know. I'd like to recognize microphone number two.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Small, and I'd like to first, I'd like to first thank the city council for letting us voice our opinions. I really appreciate that that side of democracy is working. I also welcome the panel to, welcome to Lethbridge, whatever that means. And I've heard a lot with my fellow citizens about the risks that we are asked to take on or to burden in, for better lack of term. We've also heard of the preventive measures, which also has been confirmed by the panel that aren't 100 percent, preventive measures that were in place in other places, either around the world or in Alberta. My question, therefore, is, well, and I also, I haven't heard any benefits to me, my community, or my fellow citizens. My question, therefore, is, who do I talk to and who can my fellow citizens talk to that will stop this? And also, people, who do I talk to to change what's need, obviously, changed now?
Thank you, and I think the question, and I'm paraphrasing, is, what can you do as a citizen to have a say in this? Am I correct in that? Fluctantly?
Who do I directly talk to? Who do I directly talk to to, A, stop this, and B, make the needed changes that need to be changed now, not just in the future?
It's, you know, it's a political, it's a political question.
Well, I mean, anybody.
But I don't think it's something that these folks here can answer, but I think it's a question that me, as council, have heard loud and clear, and we've taken that upon ourselves as well, to be your voices in regards to this issue. And we've taken that upon ourselves as well, to be your voices in regards to this issue. So I will answer that question on the, on the end. And we're working with our MLAs as well, our two local MLAs. Thank you. I'd like to recognize microphone number one. And thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you. I'm Bob Robinson, resident of the city of Lethbridge, rural landowner in the province. And having said that, I have petroleum installations on my rural property. I guess my question will not be for the panel or for council. It's going to be to the people of the audience here. I'm just curious as to how many of you depend on the petroleum industry, i.e. fuel in your cars, heat in your homes, et cetera?
Okay, I'm sorry, you know, okay, sir, you know, I, actually, you know what? The questions are not directed to the audience today. The question's directed to our panelists, the ones that have come and traveled here. So do you have a question for our panelists?
Well, I guess, I guess I will direct to the council.
Okay.
I gather that the council is not in favor of the oil industry drilling on the west side.
Well, the council has a resolution on the books that was passed unanimously that we are against urban drilling.
Against urban drilling?
The key word is urban drilling.
But you're not against?
Urban drilling within our city boundaries.
Right. But the city is not against taking the money for the sale of industrial land to the petroleum industry?
I couldn't answer on behalf of my colleagues, sir. But I do, we do have a resolution on the books regarding urban drilling.
I can give you a quick answer. Every other industry, we can regulate where they locate. So you don't see our other industries. You don't see Canberra Foods in a residential area. You don't see the distillery in a residential area. Every other industry, we can regulate by land use where they can locate. The issue that we have with urban drilling is we have no say over where they can locate. That's the big problem.
Understood.
Thank you, Mayor Spurlin. Thank you. Thank you for your question, sir. Thank you.
Like the gentleman before me said.
I'm sorry, this is, sorry, sir, I'm not, I'm not, we're not going to get into debate here. I'm just trying to kind of, I know. But everyone's asking one question. If you want to follow up, you can just follow up behind this lady. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the question, sir. And thank you for your patience. I'd like to recognize microphone or number two, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Chin, and my question is for Mr. Willard. Many regions and countries, whether it's far away in our world or close to us, have either put a moratorium on fracking or a complete ban. Why is it that the AER is approving record numbers of applications?
Well, I'll make an observation that maybe you could have made also, is most of the countries that have a moratorium do not have a history of oil and gas. They lack a regulatory framework, they lack a history, they lack a lot of rules and basic regulatory framework. So if I lived in those jurisdictions, I think I would be supporting a go-slow, maybe not a moratorium. In Alberta, we've got a lot of knowledge, a lot of skills, a lot of understanding in place, a foundation, if you will, right now. So I feel confident that we can proceed in a safe manner. We need the rules and regulations in place.
Thank you. Thank you, miss. And you can, you can get in line again if you have another question, because there's no one behind you, but. I'd like to recognize microphone number one.
My name is David Maxwell, resident of West Lethbridge. The 40-plus years that I've lived in this great city, not once have I ever seen this type of community activism on any issue whatsoever, be it a federal, a city election, or even healthcare. Not once. The city is almost 90,000 plus. However many of those citizens are of legal voting age, I really don't know. So my question to you, Mr. Willard, is, earlier in the evening, you mentioned that you feel that you are, number one, accountable to the city, to the people of Alberta first, and then to whoever's paying your paycheck next. So given that the current petition is over 10,000 strong, and this has never, ever happened, it really is setting a precedent here in this city, how many people would have to be on that list before you woke up one morning and decided to say, I'm not going to listen to, I'm not going to listen to Allison Redford or the oil companies, and it's game over? How many would have to be on that list?
Well, I'm going to answer the question as I believe I've heard it. And that being is that I have confidence in the regulatory process. Where I do not support is the preempting of that process, because there's 10, or 1,000, or 10,000 people in a petition. I would like to think that the decisions in this province will be science-based, risk-based, balancing that socioeconomic, environmental. As I said before, we do not even have an application before us. So does drilling on the west side of Lethbridge make sense or not make sense? From a regulator's point of view, we don't even have an application to begin to test that premise.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize microphone number two.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Denise Two-Spirit Sage Walker. I have a lot of views and understandings of fracking and the oil industry. I view you, all of you people on stage as trustees. Your job is to protect the essence of life. I appreciate the work that you, as a panel, have done to share with us what is taking place, because it's understanding that's going to bring all of this to the proper fruition, to a solution and a remedy. Because it's a solution and remedy that we're all looking for. I want you to understand that with all that I've heard tonight, I do not have a confidence in the fracking. And it bothers me that the essence of life is not being protected to its fullest.
If you could just get to your question, I appreciate that. I just want, I don't want to use a soapbox, okay?
So my question is, how are you going to protect the essence of life so that no one has any harm put to them through this process? So that the water is not contaminated? And how do you project that there is ever going to be a problem? Because we keep seeing it time and time again. So please, protect the essence of life. You're doing a great job, but let's do a greater job in protecting the essence of life. Thank you.
I'll just, I will, I'm not going to take that as a question. I don't expect, so I appreciate that. But let's try to keep things to questions. Recognize mic number one, and if you have to lower, I think, someone could just help. There we go. Thank you very much.
I know that you people are here at the invitation of the mayor and the council. You were asked to come so that we could get information. We, none of us know very much about the process. We're worried at the idea that our home might be invaded by oil wells, by flares. I have read a lot on the internet. I understand that the horizontal fracking is relatively new. I've, I've read a lot about the amount of water that's used and lost, and that's a big concern to a lot of us. My question is a practical one. If this goes into effect, I live down in Paradise Canyon on the golf course, and by the map, Cooley's is one of the possible places. How many trucks will come down the roads that are designated? Now, I've read that these trucks are huge, that they weigh tons. The equipment they carry are tons. The amount of sand that is used in a well is, you know, much, much large. So I guess my question is, can you give us an idea that if this were to happen, what could we expect in the way of transportation, coming and going? The noise, the equipment, the wearing of the roads, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you. I think that's a very good question. I'm going to direct that to the, to the fire chief, because you're probably the most, you're probably the most knowledgeable regarding how many, how many dangerous vehicles, vehicles travel these roads. Could you give an estimate, what we have right now?
As far as the route down to these proposed well sites, they wouldn't be traveling likely down towards Paradise, but they would be using University Drive and/or off of, I believe it's 10th Street. So the numbers of trucks going in initially for the well site development, you know, there would be upwards of numbers over 10s in a day into the site and establishing and then beginning their drilling. So once those rigs are on site, once they got their, their well site established, there would be ongoing service trucks in there, concrete and other related support service rig equipment. And so truck traffic would increase, absolutely. That's acknowledged for these wells initially. Long-term service rigs where those wells are serviced again, or frac rigs that come in, those would be over a period of a week, and that might be numerous trucks, half a dozen to, to a dozen vehicles going into that, even into one well site. So it would increase truck traffic.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to expand on that one, because the lady did reference that she's heard about enormous volumes and enormous number of trucks, et cetera. So I just want to take the opportunity here to, to explain that the, the size of the fracturing operation, whether it's a single fracture at the base of a single well, or the multi-stage fracturing that you've heard in the news and media accordingly, has a very vast range. If I understand, the public information for a well being proposed in this area might include 300 meters of water for that well. If I move to the northwest part of this province for a very long, two, three kilometer-long horizontal well with 30, 40, 50 stages, that individual event might use 30,000 meters of water. The trucking of the water itself is a major component. So the trucking for this well in this area, which has have a handful of trucks, for a well in the north, 200 to 300 trucks a day. So there's a vast difference in the potential for impact and disturbance to the community depending on the type of fracture. And often, type of fracture is a reflection of the type of rock we're trying to get oil and gas out of. So just a bit of a caution is that one size will not fit all. There's quite a range in fracking technology.
So what I'm going to do now is, we got two and two. And then after this, we're going to have some closing comments, and I'm going to bring this meeting to an end, okay? And I appreciate that. And if there's someone that needs to get up there, I will allow the one person to pop in the back if they need to, please. And thank you for your patience, everyone. I noticed a few people have left, about five or six people. I'm just joking. I'd like to recognize microphone number two, please.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Nyquist, and I don't believe we are against oil and petroleum exploration. It's a major part of our economy, way of life. But I haven't heard this tonight. My question is, and with all due respect, why do these companies feel a need to have to drill within city limits or urban areas in the first place? And number two, when these applications are made to you, why do you even give them the time of day? With all due respect and thank you.
I don't think they can answer that, but I think they're going to take that as an opinion of yourself, and thank you very much.
But who was your question directed to? Because it just, okay, Mr. Will, you heard the question. Could you answer that question to the best of your ability?
If you hold mineral rights, as explained by the Department of Energy, you have the right to explore for the minerals you purchased, subject to all the rules and regulations, subject to the notification and engagement requirements of the regulator. So there's a lot of caveats. So they do have the right, having owned or purchased those P&amp;G rights, to do that. You, as a community, also have rights to, to have use of your surface and enjoyment of your property. So right now, in this province, we do not have any policy statement or overarching set of laws that would preclude it. So once again, we have a process in place that provides what I believe is a fair process to look at the pros and cons of both. Because right now, we got perhaps two owners, and they both have rights.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize microphone number one, and I think we have three people left after that.
Hello. My question is for Dr. Schmidt. My name is David Lance. I'm a university student, and I have a question in regards to the horizontal drilling. What's the maximum that they can do horizontally? And why is that not being proposed as a substitute solution to go the maximum from a different location outside the city?
The maximum, I think, that's been done so far, and this is probably in the North Sea, is something like eight kilometers. And I think there's some quite long wells in northeast Alberta, northwest Alberta also. Actually, let me also amplify that from one pad, from one well bore, you can do what are called multilaterals. You can actually take out, you know, you have, I just showed a cartoon of one, but you could put even, you know, a number from one spot. So why, I don't know, right? That's up to the development. They have to look at the cost. It's not cheap to do these long horizontal wells. It probably has to do also with the geology, and I think a lot of it is just learning about the geology at this point, so.
So just expanding that, a question the community or individual can ask a future applicant is, to what degree has that company explored alternatives? And that includes drilling alternatives. So as I understand, directional drilling is not uncommon here. So that's just as one example. Instead of having three vertical wells, you may have one vertical well and two directionally drilled wells. So there may be a partial separation, but you're asking the question, can you go much further than that? And I would suggest that would be a good question directed to a future applicant.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
My question is for Mr. Willard. He's a popular guy tonight, I guess. I do have a question for you. I'm wondering, I am not familiar with drill rigs and chemicals and things that are stored on site. Could you paint me a picture of exactly what that will look like in our West Lethbridge if something like this was to happen in our community?
Boy, I'd like to introduce you to two field staff that do rig inspections every day, because I'm afraid of making a mistake.
Well, I'm concerned, the safety of my family comes first, and I do live close to those. I am not in, within the 1.5-kilometer radius, so I guess I'm not directly affected. But I am concerned about how the chemicals are stored on site. When you talked about how the wells are perforated with explosives, I'm curious, like, what kind of explosives, how they're brought in, how long they're staying there? Because they're 800 meters from Sunridge, and they are just as close to other communities on the west side of 30,000-plus people and over 3,000 students that are in school, and I'm a teacher, and I'm concerned about those. So could you tell me what's on storage?
Okay, well, obviously, maybe I should walk through it in a, just a very high level. And if you want a more detailed question, we actually have two rig inspectors right here. So you may be talking to them offline in a few minutes when we close. What the community is going to see eventually, initially, would be a site preparation. So you're going to see a bulldozer, some earth-moving equipment go and prepare the site for a drilling rig to be moved on. And that's going to be one of the busier days you're going to see is the rig move. There's going to be a lot of equipment carried by trucks to that site. So it's going to look very, very busy. There's going to be a drilling rig with a capacity to drill in the order of 1,600, 1,800 meters, is that sort of thing. So let's call it a medium-sized rig. Obviously, you're going to see the derrick that you've seen as you drive through the countryside. There's a number of technical and as well as safety equipment on those rigs.
But I'm more concerned about the chemicals that are going to be stored.
Okay, so.
And what happens with the fluid after the fact.
Okay, so drilling a well is going to require fluid. So it could be just as simple as, as making the mud for that drilling system. So there's going to have to be storage on site for the water and the ingredients to make the mud. And the mud, of course, is there for wellbore control. The chemicals for the fracking operation will be relatively small in volume, because this is going to be probably a very, very small fracture operation. So they're going to be brought on site, stored in So they're going to be brought on site, stored in tanks, so there's not a release of those chemicals. My expectation is they're probably going to be blended on site, although I could be wrong. The staff could, yeah, they're nodding their heads. So there's going to be a blending. So if the city grants some permission to use treated fresh water, they probably, as a minimum, are going to start adding salt to that water. Adding salt is going to be required because fresh water, when it contacts formation at eighteen hundred meters, the clay is probably going to swell, which is the last thing an industry wants to do that wants to get hydrocarbons out of that rock. So most of the chemicals is going to come, whether it's a powder or liquid form, and mixed on site. So it's going to be mixed in a closed system kind of thing. The products coming back after the fracturing operation, also because it's oil-free waste, will go into tankage and with a sort of a closed system and go into tank trucks to be removed. They, one of the documents are read in the open houses is that fluid may be trucked as far as Pincher Creek for safe, long-term disposal.
Would you consider those fluids, then, that are stored on site, flammable?
I'll tell you what. Who are the two folks, who are these folks that you're experts? Can you stand up for us? Can you stand up for me, please? To stand up, just because I think these people will make yourselves available to answer this question after the meeting because I think it's a good question, but it probably needs more, about five or 10-minute answers. Would you mind that?
Okay, and I just have one for the fire.
No, go ahead.
I can just give you a quick answer on the chemicals part about the size of the fracs that we're talking about for these wells and the chemicals that are going to be brought on will not typically be stored on location for maybe more than the actual day that the frac happens. Maybe the day before, a chemical van with containers of chemicals would come on, like I say, maybe that day of the frac, and then it would be gone.
Okay, and what about the oil that comes out, too? Is that stored on site for a long period of time?
Yeah, it may or may not be.
Okay, so it could.
You will make yourself available, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And sorry, and then I just have one question for our fire chief. November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, we had a very devastating grass fire. It burned at a rate of eight-point-three kilometers per hour and at a speed that was unbelievable, over fifteen hundred hectares. I guess my question to you is, if the well closest to our Sunridge, something happened or the place of ignition did happen in Sunridge, that would, with those stats, that would give approximately seven minutes for Sunridge to completely evacuate if, at the point of ignition, they knew about that? So I'm just wondering, what kind of impact having these wells so close to urban areas could happen or could have on something that is prevalent in our area where we have over one hundred and thirty-three wild grass fires yearly? We have over stats of fifty-one percent of the year, one hundred and eighty-five days of the year in Lethbridge, we have over forty-five kilometer-an-hour winds. So I'm just curious of the impact that these would have and...
Thank you.
So in regards to a well site fire coming off well site in towards the residential community, is that what the question is? Of course, we don't like the risk. Anytime we introduce flaring or any industry in a residential neighborhood in this fashion that has hazardous chemicals or storage of hazardous chemicals, it is a risk to us. We certainly aren't, you know, in favor of the risk. But we know that we have seen well sites that are very good at keeping fires from coming onto their sites. And maybe the question is for Mr. Willard, what is the regulations that say what your fire site control look like if it is a fire that's on site? What are the obligations of the well site operator to contain that to their site?
Let me look at my two experts down below. Can you give a good answer to that question? It's an important question. That being is, what is the fire mitigative practices and procedures that you would expect an operator with one or two well oil battery to have?
Please go to the microphone, sir. Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, there would be things like certain spacing requirements that a company would be required to have with respect to their flare stack and with respect to other vessels that would be on site, things like that.
Thank you. Thank you. And then you probably get more clarification from that gentleman because I think you'd be speaking to him after. Two final people to ask questions. We'll, microphone number one.
Hi, my name is Knut Peterson. I'd just like to point out, whether we like it or not, we live in an era where deflecting responsibility is almost an Olympic sport. My question is, what happens if things go wrong, given the fact that Alberta Energy Regulator is basically on record as saying they owe no duty of care to individuals or maybe even communities? I just wonder what, who may be responsible if bad things happen here?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. And I guess, answer yourself, sir.
All I can promise this group is that we're going to try our best. We're going to put the best technology, the best processes. It is not an absolute one-hundred-percent guarantee.
Okay. Last question, then we'll be winding up here. So to yourself, make it a good one.
No pressure, huh? Again, my name is Jeff Small. I was just wondering, has there been any report conducted or any kind of investigation on what the, all the total risk assessments and also the, also what those percentage of risk assessments are to Lethbridge in particular? And also, what is the worst-case scenario that you know that would happen to Lethbridge and area? And is Lethbridge, its brave men and women, which I'd like to thank, especially for the fires that we've had, able to handle that?
That's a good question. It has multiple parts to it, and I'll do the best I can to answer. And regards to what we have for capacity, we don't deal with oil site, our well site oil fires. What we deal with is, you know, the post-event, whether we have a release or an explosion, worst case. We have a system to establish what we would call a security and perimeter, deal with that site and try and contain what's on that site, let the operator specialists come in and deal with that. As far as it being assessed as a risk, we know we already have existing wells that were drilled, as mentioned by Mr. Green earlier in Lethbridge's history, without any event. And there are hundreds of wells drilled in a year without any event. But there are wells that are drilled where we have catastrophic failure, either through human error or mechanical failure. And that risk always exists. Based on what we know for this well site and what we've seen in the preliminary information, you know, when I say lower, it's still a risk. And we have to be aware of that. So this is new to the community as far as drilling within, very close to our residential neighborhood. So it's a risk that we've paid a very close attention to. And I think through the diligence of working with the regulators, making sure that every single step, even though the plan is generic, every single step has been asked for in preparation of this well site. So it's not a risk we like, but we will minimize what we can with the operator for that risk.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you, first of all, to our panelists. There's some tough questions asked tonight, and I know there's going to be some future tough questions to be asked because there's a lot of questions that are in writing that do need answers, which will be posted on our website. As I stated earlier, we have close to a hundred questions in writing, but they will be posted by the proper authorities that we answered, and they'll be posted on our website. So I don't want anyone to think that their question wasn't read out today because it will be answered. I also want to thank the people that helped organize this meeting. And I want to push a kind of a shout-out, as they say, to Councilor Coffin. Because Councilor Coffin, he took a lot of work, put the resolution forward that we have this meeting. So I want to thank Councilor Coffin for bringing this together. I also want to thank our staff. A lot of our staff had to make a lot of phone calls to try to facilitate so everyone could be here on this very night. So I want to thank our staff as well, as well as to thank our panel, and I wish them safe travels. I would just ask and sum up, and I would just ask maybe that the mayor would like to have some final words as our mayor.
Sure, I would like to echo those thanks. And I think we did learn something tonight. What we're, you know, with the topic of urban drilling, I think municipalities and residents want clarity. I think the oil companies want clarity when it comes to urban drilling. And the most important thing is that we get a good, clear policy from our provincial government. I think we are committed to doing that, working with the provincial government to discuss these issues of urban drilling. It's certainly one of our highest priorities, together with EMS dispatch. But certainly, we want to make sure that we can work on your behalf. And certainly, I see that MLA Pastore is here to take the message back. And to the government, we have written communications to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Minister of Energy, and to the premier, saying we want to talk about this issue. So we're looking forward to having discussions on the issue. I know that we're on the radar. So clarity on the issue of urban drilling is what we all want, and that's what we're pursuing as your council. And we'd like to thank the experts who came tonight to provide their expertise. And we'd like to thank the people who showed great interest by turning out tonight and for submitting and asking your questions. So thank you very much.
So I just have the following resolution signed by Councilor Carlson that we now adjourn this Community Issues Committee meeting. All those in favor? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.